So we'll go ahead and start, I don't know. Rich, I'm gonna be at four o'clock, Marta's not gonna be here at all. I don't remember that, Johnny and Russ. Whatever. Uh, so the first two things I want to talk about, this has to be on next month's agenda, is the mayor's and the city council salary review committees. And so, all of those committees are for the mayor's salary review committee, vice mayor's on there, and then some two council members appointed by the vice mayor. So they won't go on that committee, and he started lobbying Marta. And then two citizens, one selected by the council upon recommendation of the vice mayor, and one selected by the mayor. Is it lays it out like that? But last time I did this, I would like to do this again, is have them, have all the ones, all the community members on the agenda, and just, so you all vote on all of them, so it's not just, you find out, so it's just all one thing, that makes it easier and cleaner. So, but we do need to find for mayor salary, mayor salary review, two citizens. And so, recommendations are welcome and requested. And then we need four citizens for the council salary review committee. That committee is vice mayor, four residents, one selected by the council, then it says one selected by the, three selected by the mayor. Again, we put it out there like that, but you will, I will ask you to vote on all of them, but I will take recommendations. That way, we all have input on it, it's not just-
We're gonna do this tonight?
No, this has to be on, this has to be on next month's agenda, so, I mean, as soon as we can get the names, then we can reach out.
Anybody but me.
Well, that-
It's really like-
This is body change, so I don't know if we're gonna say it.
Yeah, well, I'd like to ask the people what they will insert first, mayor.
Right.
And so we gotta have, we gotta, the committee's appointed by December, they have to present their recommendation to the council by March, and the council has to adopt these salaries by May.
Is anybody that was, were there anybody on it last year that wants to do it again?
Honestly, you just do it once every four years.
What about the radius terms?
I can't even remember who's on this term.
What's the March deadline?
The March is when the committee has to make the report back to, the recommendation back to council, at the March meeting. And then, the May meeting is the deadline that the council has to adopt the salaries for the next council and mayor. And so it doesn't go into effect, so if y'all decide you only give yourselves a $10,000 raise, it won't go into effect until July 1st, 27th.
So you have to do it again?
Yeah. You have to bring it.
So it doesn't really matter?
Is there any, any thoughts right now on, on people that we can start reaching out to?
I started being funny today, I'm not.
I started funny too, isn't it? A little serious.
So I'll send dollar boxes, we gotta get one, or, so six citizens, there's six things we gotta get, they're not in this room, we need to be asked and committed to by November. They won't be the 25th, we'll meet on 25th, it'll be the 22nd, 23rd.
Is that Tuesday?
So, so we can approach someone and say, hey, do you wanna be a part of this? And if they say sure-
And just send an email, hey, this person wants to do it, and then that way-
And their contact information's good.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't need to fill anything out or anything.
No.
And they after you talk to them or something.
I'm in it. And if y'all wanted any new resumes, I mean, this is, that's pretty, this is a pretty short time specific committee, and they, they do have to be citizens of the city, they can't-
Amy, I have somebody, Amy Thompson.
Okay.
She was the lastest lady that had-
What if they only live in the county?
They live in city.
Okay.
Yep.
I've seen Kimberly Allen before, Charles Burden, Charles-
I love that.
What?
I love Charles Burden, thank her.
Charles Burden? Is that part of Burton, Burton, Burton?
Sound partner.
Yeah.
Okay. Nice, three, three good things to start with, and so y'all can email me, or ask me, and then say, hey, they've agreed to do it, and we can, uh, they just need, you have a four, four for the council salary, and two for the mayor, so, we can split that up. Next, we're gonna talk about, you all, I think several months ago, approved a resolution for a cost savings program, or ordinance for a cost savings program in the city for the employees. And Ron had been working on that with the committee, whoever's on that committee, Marta's on it, some other people. So he's gonna be an update on what we've gotten so far.
Yes, so-
So it looks like $90,000, and we give a $10,000?
Not quite, uh, I'm gonna pass this around and get it on mine, this kinda gives you just a brief summary. Uh, the ordinance went to effect in May, and since then, we've received 15 submissions from employees, there should be a couple extra, too, I think.
It's just one thing.
Yeah, it's just one. Uh, what we have kinda found, and so as a reminder, who's on that committee, is Zach is part of purchasing, myself, Nathan, Kelsey, and Marta as vice mayor. Uh, what I have, what I think we have found, I think this is a good way to describe it, is, is that, that we have some great submissions, if we use the spirit of the suggestion, maybe not their literal, so we've been trying to kinda investigate, maybe we can't do exactly what they suggested, so we kinda investigate the general idea. Of the 15, seven, we have either approved or still working through, how could they be implemented, or how could the savings be determined, how much it would be? But, a lot of them, even if we didn't agree, uh, didn't recommend them for approval, there was a very specific reason, so we'll give you an idea. Uh, we had an officer, um, recommend a new vendor for our radios. While we found out they were shorter, uh, they cost less in the short run, a lot of cities that have used that vendor have actually had to go back to the current provider we use, in fact, Miami spent $120 million going back to the same radio company we use now, even though it would've saved us money in the short run. Um, but we've gotten some great ideas, one has been fully vetted all the way through, and, uh, we expect just shy of $15,000. And then I think over the coming month, we're gonna have both our, um, uniform spending, uh, what's the word, cons, made more consistent, as well as opting into a state law that would allow us to speed up our inspections, code enforcement, as well as increase our fines for those, so that will bring in savings as new revenue as well. So, part of the ordinance was to give you, uh, some kinda consistent update, and so just wanted to touch base with you on how that program is going. Like I said, we're about 50%, that we're still working through the submissions. Uh, I also tell every, uh, set of new employees, every orientation about this law, so that way our newest employees are looking at it, and coming in with fresh eyes if they have ideas, to submit them to us. Any questions on any of them?
I'll say, we talked, like, when Ron talked about, like, the, the vendor, uh, and the new policy for the uniform spending, um, while the vehicle, all, of take home vehicles, we can estimate the price savings, we, we're just gonna watch, like, some of these, we won't go to estimate the price savings at the front, we'll have to watch a bunch for a year, and then determine what the actual savings is, so, no, they're like, even going forward, there won't be an actual, some of them may not actually have, yeah, they're approved or moved forward, but we don't know the expected savings yet, but we'll work through that.
And how the ordinance works is that we don't give any money to the employee until after the savings have been realized for a year, so we know exactly how much it'll be.
Of course, what is the employee driving home vehicle?
So, there wasn't a consistent policy as to what employees had take home vehicles and which ones didn't, so what we did is created a consistent policy, and based upon who we expect would qualify through that, that's how we estimated the savings.
You're drivers.
Okay. Or, also, what we do is, is while we don't have a residence requirement, uh, for city employees, we had some that lived, I will just say, very far away that had take home vehicles, and so, as a result, we have a, as part of the policy that you don't have to live in the city, but if you live outside the county with a take home vehicle, you have to reimburse the city for the mileage to the city line. So, for example, we had one employee that was, uh, driving 40 miles one way, with a take home vehicle.
Question about CRA, does CRA own the properties or the county?
CRA. And again, see, that's a, that's a, also looking at, it's a short term solution to a, you know, long, looking at long term, that's a very short sighted plan, so we just sell them all off. But we, CRA owns a lot, and when they reimburse the city for, uh-
Promotion?
No, for, for both.
On one, two, three, the third one down, decrease number of vendors, on all the other ones, when it says not recommended, you have a reason, did you just miss that one?
Oh, yeah, the, the reason why we get it was because generally having more vendors actually saves the city money, because we have more people bidding. It is, does require more paperwork, because we have to have the vendor's information on file, uh, but that was the reason why we didn't recommend it. Yep. More bids, more competition, more prices. Yeah, any other questions on that? Any-
So, the ones that are still investigating, you feel that's an update?
Yeah, we, yeah, we expect, like I said, I think we're gonna have two to three of them wrapped up within the next month, um, so that should lead to some further expected savings in the program.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, them two, once, employees will, hey, you know, I, I got, you know, a thousand dollars back, and they're like, okay, well, let's, you know, employees will see the benefit of it, look what they ever saw.
It became more complicated than we thought, too. I mean-
Right.
You wanna speak?
Well, not necessarily, but it, I mean-
I just wanna add a commentary, I don't wanna speak up.
No, the process, the process got a little more complicated than we initially thought, because so much, so many times, somebody's got a suggestion, and like you said, it's maintaining the spirit of the suggestion, and then you go down a rabbit hole to identify a whole nother set of things that we could, we could look at, and some of that we passed off to other departments, because it wasn't necessarily something that was-
Relevant during-
Relevant to what we were doing, but it was, it was a good idea, it's just not a cost savings idea, you know, and, uh, and I, I've been, it, it's funny, uh, 'cause something, they, they hand out the jobs, okay, so like, I'm researching a particular thing right now, and I, I called one of our department heads the other day, I said, this is the inquisition calling, how do you, how do you do this? You know, and these, but they know, I mean, you know, and, and they, they seem to appreciate, are the names on there?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, a couple of these are, my county people who know very well what things are costing, it's, it's kinda neat.
On some of these, it says it, it's been communicated, but like, on one of them, it says it was not recommended because of quality concerns, has that not been communicated because we're still looking into it, or?
Uh, which one?
Like, we don't have, uh, public safety radios, the one you talked about, the one-
Oh, um, that is just a mis, that has been communicated, that's not it.
Oh, what?
It has been communicated.
It has been communicated, then. Every one that hasn't been recommended, or, or has been approved, they, they are aware of. The ones that are being investigated, we've told them that we're looking into it, we just need more time.
Are you any questions on that? I was planning to do this anyway, or, you know, I, I was gonna do this anyway, not because you walked in, but-
Sure.
It's on my sheet. Um, as of right now, we're still planning on having the ribbon cutting for the animal care center on the Senate, um, we did have a nice washout on the, uh, the drive coming into the animal care center parking lot, um, they are repairing that, and should be, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it, they haven't got a repair, because you can't, can't get in there, we have to do the washout, if they haven't got a repair by Tuesday, then we'll, we'll postpone the ribbon cutting.
What time is the ribbon cutting, tentatively?
12:00 on Friday. I would say there's a pretty good chance that it will not be repaired because of the, just because of the rain, it's put them behind schedule, they got in there with a pump today and pumped the water out of the two swimming pools without having the front yard, um, but it's supposed to rain again on Saturday, so, I'd say it's probably a fair to middling chance that it's gonna be too wet for them to pave next week. Um, now, if you still wanna do the ribbon cutting, I mean, we can, there's a- We can't have a big crowd out there, there's not enough parking, but if you wanted to do just a small, hey, we're almost in here, probably make that work.
I would rather wait to be done, the only way, there's a lot of people that are excited about it, and they wanna be there, and so, we talked about having the ribbon cutting, then like, people go through the empty building before we get everybody in there.
The animals won't be there?
Not yet, no.
They can't even get in drive right now. Well, I'm talking about on the actual ribbon cutting.
If it gets postponed past next Friday, then yes, they will be in there.
I'm gonna send something to my neighbors.
Dr. Matt drop them off?
Mm-hmm.
I'm shot, neighbors.
Mm-hmm. I used to go, they would play with what they wanted.
I got enough.
Yeah.
I got a corset though.
No, I don't.
I need to have one.
You got a what?
She's sweet, can't course up, I think.
What did I get?
She's twenty-four and five months, naturally, you're solid black.
Oh, Frank about to have a bar time.
Not that Frank, my dog Frank. She's really sweet.
My little, my little five pound Yorkie just lays on her back when he walks by.
She's like, I'm hitting it.
Yeah, yeah, but play with me though, but they like, play with me. Um, senior center, senior citizen center, almost there, got the keys, exchanged over today, uh, they had, I think they just got their replacement partitions in the restrooms, they came with some scratches on them, and they were very confused, they're supposed to be scratch resistant, so they got new ones. Um, and then, Austin, when are they gonna pave the, in front of that, that-
Within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, so when they, there's a, there's a spot in front of you, driven by, where the property line ends, street starts, and kinda sidewalk stops, and there's just kinda dirt, and so we're gonna pick up a drop off point, so if someone's mobility issues and not driving, then get dropped off and go right in front, so once that, once that get done, then we'll be ready to have a grand opening for that.
We pressure washed all the concrete today.
Yeah.
Around the building.
Yeah. So we're getting close. And then, I know y'all wanna talk about the library, which y'all wanna talk about? I was just as shocked as you all were when, uh-
I just don't understand why it would've been sent out to the media by other people, not, like, not us, other people from the library, and very much worded like it was a done deal. When they don't even have their final numbers, and they keep going, look-
They were just, they got the, they had the records back, and we're excited, and-
Thousand dollars a square foot, insane.
Rumor I heard was that no city councilperson, or mayor, or any county would get, would get behind it, so they had to go to private stuff, and they needed to get it out.
But it never even been presented to get behind.
Yeah.
Well, there was, uh, under the ta, not on table, behind scenes talking about doing it, and it got zero response.
Well, the average commercial cost billings, like, about $300 something dollars a square foot right now, a thousand dollars a square foot, just seems, wow. I'm having coffee with her in the morning. Some of that-
Don't tell, don't tell her where you're eating coffee at.
I wish I lived there.
Yeah. Where are you going, Frank?
She's trying to call me, we've played contact, but-
She has done a good, and she has gotten some healthy increases from the county, both with 50/50 and that.
Each city and, and the operational funding, then physical building is two, or two, maybe one, but, so, I mean, it's not her, she's not excellent, it's just, do we need that type of building now?
No.
I think, I think you got, the drawings came, she got excited, and they just, she was done.
Our children's children will pay for it, and by that point, libraries will be obsolete, and we have a $36 million old book museum.
So, um, sooner or later.
What gave that away, then?
Poker buddies.
Yeah, well, that's the one thing I'm talking about.
That's all-
That was fun.
That's all I had on my list.
That's just a happy, happy birthday.
Did they, did, was, Nathan, were you able to get us, I think Larry asked for this, last meeting, uh, fund balance?
So, I'm, I'm gonna give you a number, but I'm also gonna give you a little speech, I bet you're not surprised.
Oh, well, that's fine, that's-
I've never, I've never-
So, at the end of September, if we were making a pretty good educated guess on the fund balance, it'd be about $13.1 million, okay? But things that we don't know include current and some non-current liabilities that we do or don't know about that have not been recorded. Current receivables and revenues like sales taxes, grants, and some deposits that are actually measurable but we have not received yet, also some state shared revenues, they may be knowable, but like I said, we haven't recorded them. I don't think there's any 2025 property tax at all in September.
Right.
There's also about $600,000 in recumbrances on the books as of September 30th. Also, there's a whole list of things-
Six hundred comes away from this, 13.1?
It could, I mean, if you, if we were measuring this on fiscal year in and 60 days out, we would include that, okay? Uh, but we don't really know of that $600,000 what's actually spendable. Also, there's all of the things that we only close once a year after fiscal year end, including transfers to capital, for example. The general fund balance, uh, general fund, fund balance that I gave you, uh, or the estimate of it, is gonna get lower before it rises again, because we will collect most of our property tax mid-November through the end of December. Um, and then there are some pretty large expenses, like our P E partners insurance, uh, some pretty significant debt payments, uh, that have hit or will hit in October, November, or early December before the bulk of property tax comes in. Now, Frank has heard a very similar version of the same speech that I just gave a couple of times, fund balance includes things that are measurable within the next 60 days, and we, normally, we don't know that until 60 days have gone, and so for me to give you a fund balance, it is a-
Yeah, I know it'd be very-
It is a guest, it is, is an educated, uh, informed approximation, how does that sound?
Do we have a 12-month roll with what we expect fund balance to be, to factor into account the flexi, the flexibility of revenues being so heavily over two or three months?
So, we do a little cash flow forecasting, which is more important than fund balance forecasting? Because fund balance and cash-
It always works more important, huh?
Fun, fun, well, it is if you're trying to pay the bills, fund balance and cash, uh, cash are not the same thing.
No, I'm worried about how we are against the budget.
Okay, uh, I did not send you a September expense report, but I, I, I will. The budget committee got it, but I didn't, I, Councilman Don Ellis said I sent that out, and I hadn't done it.
Oh, has the audit got back yet? I've been having to go to state control's office to see the audit.
It's there, it's in here.
Here it is.
It's there.
You print it, is it?
I gotta print it.
Oh, you printed that, I, I've been using control's for, for two weeks.
It's there.
It is, but I'm not gonna print 124.
No, I asked, he printed it for me.
Please don't ask me to print nine, because they're gonna bring bound copies.
Uh, I print my own, I own office.
Okay, they, they are gonna bring bound copies, money, whenever they get here, yes, sir, when you're here, T C I.
You had your, that's not fair.
Well, I can't figure out my email on my iPad, it's really hard to look at.
Mine, mine are not concerned.
So, hey, well, but-
I don't have a desktop at Holland, so.
There's something going on on the iPad.
If we're a hundred million dollar, you know, budget, you know, the, the 15% of that would be 15 million, you get below what is recommended, I guess what I'm asking is, when is Governor Blackburn gonna come in and do our budget for us?
What? There was a whole string of words there to hand that were interesting.
I know.
Okay, okay, um, the, uh, we have not gotten our, uh, our budget letter back from the state yet, we anticipate that, um, I would not be surprised if they did not have some, uh, advice, uh, some of it may be stronger than advice on, on our, on our budget, uh, especially going forward. Their primary thing, uh, is to ensure that we can meet our, our debt obligations and fulfill the statutory requirements for a city.
Sure.
And, they will, they could make some recommendations to us on, on things that we need to do to, to maintain at least those basic services.
Like? I guess you can't really answer that.
Well, I mean, the, normally, in a situation where you're getting close to what their, what their markers are, the first thing you do is you get a letter from them and say, listen, we're approving this this year, um, this is not wise, you probably need to do better next year, and then they will supply some suggestions for that.
Okay.
It may be we get a visit, uh, in some, in some cases, uh, cities our size and larger get, get a visit, um, from, uh, members- From Mr. Mumpower? From Mr. Mumpower and members of his staff. Uh, I, I will tell you, we've, uh, been in contact with them about planning some, some other things, and they are very well aware that we're here, and they're aware that the work that, uh, that we're doing, that you guys have done, and so, they're not surprised. I mean, it's, this is not new to them, so.
Well, it's probably not new to any of us that have followed this, you know?
Right.
With the fund balance that we budgeted this year, does the audit for 24 cause you to want to change any of those numbers?
Oh, yes.
So what effect will that have?
So there was about an $800,000 variance in what we estimated the FY24 fund balance to be, what it actually is.
Plus or minus?
Less.
Okay, so, is the 800,000 was a total?
Larry, that's just right off the top of my head, but I, I think it was about that. And so what, what that means, of course, is that our estimated fund balance at the end of FY25 was less, and that will mean our estimated ending fund balance for FY26 would be lower as well. That's what you're asking, you're right, huh?
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't though, I mean, we, you know, we don't have, it doesn't seem like there would be any issue with us, though, getting our bond issued.
Based on the conversations that we've had, I, I don't think so, um, 'cause, I mean, just to be very-
These are just all questions that I-
No, no, that's a good question. When a city borrows money for, uh, general fund expenditures, they're called general obligation notes or bonds, okay? And in order to get that, you guys pass a resolution, which you've already done, that pledges the full faith and credit of the city of Jackson to pay those notes. And, uh, full faith and credit means you will do whatever is necessary in order to make those debt payments. And, there's not much more, despite whatever somebody's credit rating is, whether they're double A minus, or triple A plus, or whatever, no matter what, what it is, uh, there's not much more reliable than municipal debt in a state like Tennessee that is regulated as highly as we are.
Sure.
And so, for that reason, you know, I, I'm not concerned about that necessarily.
So, how long would it take to get the, the bond to hit us?
We're hoping to have that, we're hoping to have it funded by the end of the calendar year, which will, uh, require you guys to, uh, probably meet in a, in a special session at least once, um, but we're hoping, we're hoping to have that done before the end of the calendar year.
So, right now, city obligations, long term, are about $100 million, is that correct?
General fund, uh, general fund operating budget, about $100 million.
We're talking about putting 20 to 30 million in a bond, um, on top of that, and we're talking about we need to build a fire station, we need to build a police station, we need stormwater runoff, I'm getting scared, I mean, I think we need to start looking at cutting costs instead of borrowing money.
So we're having these department meetings?
Yeah, well, I mean, first of all, uh, three of them are in doctor's offices.
I'm just saying, it's what we're having.
And, and, but, but it's not, I, I have asked for accountabilities and objectives, and no one's given to, they say-
For example, that the chief Riddle gave that, I understand you couldn't be there, I understand it, but I mean, gave that.
We create once a week, if money's over there, we put in that slot once a week, so, you know, I'm just, I'm here.
I understand.
I understand, if, if we got 100 million now, and we got all those things right there, scary.
I'm not trying to be, I'm not, I don't mean this ugly, if it comes off ugly, but, no, I, 'cause I don't, and I know sometimes I word stuff very blunt, and, but I'm, I'm really just not trying to be ugly, I'm trying to get the point. If there's something you wanted from department, department heads, and like, he just told you Chief Riddle, Chief Riddle gave that, what keeps you from calling him and asking him for it?
Doesn't, as a matter of fact, I went and spent three and a half hours with him at the last budget possible.
So did he have it?
And, and, no, I'm just, I'm gonna talk about, as I said, no, but I like to keep channels of communication clear, and not get fuddled, and not go behind somebody's back in my last.
I understand that, so.
It's my problem, I should yell louder if I don't get one of these, I agree. I agree.
I didn't mean it like that, but okay. I just meant you can't make it where these meetings are set up. What, is there a way to have a better communication, and maybe we can move it around? And when I say a better communication, I'm talking about you saying, hey, I can't be there, because I've already got a scheduled doctor's appointment.
What happened is, is a couple of those were a surprise.
I get that, no, I get that, like, hey, my past six months, surprises have been my life. So I'm not saying that, but we got to also take some accountability and be like, okay, I can't do this, let's get it this way, instead of wanting everybody to change what they're doing.
Speaking of that, I know that the budget meetings have been on Wednesdays, and I've been able to go, but Wednesday is our court day. So the next three Wednesdays, I probably won't get out of court until six or seven o'clock. So I hate that, because I, I mean, I think it's been official to be able to be at them, but I just know, I was just so thankful not to have court, if you guys are familiar with it, it's little.
So what's a, what's a better, what's a better day for everyone?
Any day, then.
Every day.
Wednesday for me, so and I need to be that way.
It's very long-winded.
I, um.
Is there, anybody else have any better days of the week?
Fridays are closed days and winter days, so I can move around.
So then Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, anybody else have any issues with? I'll probably say Tuesday or Thursday will probably be a better day of the week, just because it's not the start of the week.
I'm pretty flexible on, you know.
Sweet.
Right, Larry, Tuesday, Thursday.
I think, I think you did a good job getting the dates out, this might as well be the day.
I'm, I'm just, she, she says she can't be there, so it will not be Wednesday in the next couple of weeks, because she, she won't be there, so. Or on, or for a Thursday.
The time just got me, because I, I don't want to keep any department heads over from there.
I mean, every other week has been good.
Yeah, every, we try to space it out, so we're not so inundated, and then get them there when it's, you know, about to be getting dark earlier, so.
I like a Tuesday, I like a Thursday, six.
I missed the first two, but the, the ones I've been able to go to have been very helpful, very informative. I think it's good for what, for what that's like. I, I personally enjoyed it and gained insight from it.
And three thirty is a good time?
Yeah.
Or commit for, not, week after next, we need a Tuesday at three thirty.
And I just want to jump aboard and agree with you a hundred percent, that we had one council member that invented every one of them. I told, I wish you could give me two or three of them.
And I wouldn't miss Jackson Animal Care Center.
Well, the, the bigger challenge at the Animal Care Center was getting Martin and Candice wearing the dogs, and they were talking about what's going on.
It is. How are we dealing with the next twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five audit?
So, it's a very good question. It will not, it will not be issued by December thirty-first.
No, it's issued, but we can't be waiting.
I thought she was going with another word.
We are live.
I expected that, I mean, I.
But we don't need it until.
Our target is mid to late March.
Okay.
And now we're going to, we're meeting next week to do a little cleanup that is identified, obviously, in the FY twenty-four audit, because we'd like to get it cleaned up before we do FY twenty-five, if we can. And, and then kind of come up with a plan, that's what I think we're going to do next week. I told, I think I may have said this a year ago, or ten or nine or ten months ago, ideally, you would work on an audit from September, October, November, and be done with it. And then about that time is when you guys were beginning to talk about your, your debt. And then there were a couple of other things, and I'm like, normally we would space all this out, but I feel like we've been doing it all at the same time for the last year, and it's just.
Where, where we want to get to, I think we're, we've established, you can calendar is, we, we might have to do a special call meeting for, for budget next year, but the goal for the following year is first reading of the budget at the May regular meeting. Second reading is June regular meeting, so not having to put any special call, and I haven't worked sessions and stuff like that, but having those spaced out that way, and then that way we're on a, a more strict calendar. And I'm having to pull information from all different places that we have, and so.
On the positive note, units are always in, so the record should be getting pretty well straightened out.
They are.
Yes.
And as you read through there, and I mean, I, we can talk about it, I'd, I'd rather not get too deep into this, but there are several things that were identified there that honestly have been taken care of by process or software or both. They're just, it's just, it's not really possible for it to be a problem anymore, you know?
I'm, I'm ninety-nine point nine nine percent sure, Adam, it's not a train coming at the end of the tunnel. Essentially liked.
Well, just put Nathan in front of you.
To be honest, I feel like I have to.
The train was coming, he just relented, and I was like.
Still wildly cold.
Yeah, like, and all the, the look on Nathan's face has changed since the beginning. The, the stress of, oh my gosh, what have I got myself into, just, okay, that'd be very nice. He may just is a better actor now. Anything else that's not agenda related? I think, can you put that it was going to fall right after the work session, so we can go into breathing, not to rush. It's, it is my dad's birthday, so I have to, I have to go in and see the topic. Yeah, you have a five minute break, we're just, we're like.
Five minutes, Chris, you do it quick, if you will.
Sure.
I love a five minute break.
Sure, about some stream cheese, obviously. So they're going to give all months in emails representing the state. And so we're going to.